Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Norwich City Council's Scrutiny Committee on Thursday, the 23rd of November, 2023. And welcome to all the committee members, welcome to officers who've come along today, and also to Cabinet members, and thank you very much for being with us. So we'll start off straight away with the agenda, and so apologies for absence. Everybody do some councillor drive, and we've got councillor Mike Sarn, someone, and then councillor Haynes, we've got councillor Champions.
Just an apology for councillor Bethon, she is calling, it's going to be late.
Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? No? No declarations of interest? So we'll go into item three of the agenda, and we've got minutes. We need to approve the accuracy of minutes of meetings held on 20th of July, 25th of July, and the 21st of September, 2023. Can we approve those, please? And I think that councillor Sands, you had a point to make on the 20th of July minutes.
Yes, it's not inaccurate, nothing wrong with it at all. But I would... That was a call sent to me and any other councillors who are interested. Details on how to apply for a VAC, a Voter Authentication Certificate. It seems to be a bit of a complicated process. I'm not clear myself, I will be asked on the doorstep. So it would be nice to have an email, show the steps on how to go through it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Can we agree those minutes as being accurate, as far as everyone remembers? Thank you very much. So we'll move on, and we'll move to item four, which is the report from the Retrofiting Task and Finish Group. And just before we get into the report, just to say thank you very much to the members who joined that group, to Lucy for chairing it, councillor Galvin, and to for the amazing input from officers. I think, you know, those of us who were in that group, in that task and finish group, can all agree what an amazing experience it was. And hopefully, you know, we can take the report forward. So councillor Galvin, can I ask you now to say a few words about the report, please? Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. And yeah, really an enjoyable experience, extremely interesting. And I'm really happy to be presenting this report today to everyone. I hope you've had a chance to read it and perhaps share it. And yeah, deep thanks to everyone that was in the group, especially the officers as well, especially Alex and all officers, and them, important, and everyone that was involved, because there was a lot, a lot of work went into this, dedicated work. And we met five times, and each time, I think, we drilled right down into the topics with the help of officers. And we even had a heat pump in the room with us at points, and he's here today, or she, over there. So that's a... That's a... And so, actually, an air source water heater, of which the council has 100 on order. So yeah, it's great to have it here as part of the meeting. So retrofit is quite complex. So retrofit's a complex thing, there's many parts of it. And what became clear in the group, really, and through our meetings, that we need, what's most effective is a place-based approach to that. So to really sort of build up how we do something across different dimensions, across the city, and obviously as the city council, we're really ideally placed to do that, ideally placed to grow that. Also, what became clear is it needs trust, it needs the whole community, and it needs that kind of systems approach. It's a complex thing. It will involve supply chains, it will involve upskilling, it will involve behaviour change to a certain degree. But the rewards are absolutely huge, in terms of health, fuel bills, regeneration of communities. This is all in the report, and not least carbon. So a livable future for all of us. So, and as a council, we've chosen to focus in this on our council, on our council homes, which are a huge opportunity, because we're the landlord of those 14,500 homes. I'm really grateful that Beth and them are here today to hear this as well, and they've been involved right through. So some key points to highlight. There are a set of recommendations, and we can discuss, I have questions on them a bit more. But I'd say drawing attention to retrofitting is a core and central theme to the new corporate plan, is the first one. And that we get a state of evidence readiness for future funding. I heard that Aran's spending £30 billion on this at the moment, on retrofitting. And the Labour Party has said that £28 billion on green measures will come forward. So we need to be ready for that kind of opportunity, and have sufficient resources to reach that readiness to plan strategically. And from Leeds, we heard that there's a kind of culture of retrofit that can get going across the council. So we can sort of plan to do that. And we also advise to have training for all councillors, because I think everyone in the group found them quite fascinating to get scripts with them. We looked at how it could work with the council's own companies. This is all in the report. I'm just sort of running through the recommendations, including potentially NCSL in the future, because there will be incoming generations who can come from retrofit to prepare for that. And Lion Homes has done some amazing work around resident behaviours, and we're already doing that. And we advise a retrofit communications plan and engagement strategy, which could start very quickly, to share with people what's possible. And that we play a leading role in our own estate. And very excitingly, I heard today that officers are looking at the possibility of having two pumps for this very chamber, having two on the roof, one in each corner. And actually, the hot air that is actually taken out of those grills will be part of that system. So it's good recycling of energy. Really importantly, to look at community municipal bonds for fundraising. Because one thing we learned, which I think most people probably know, is that the cost of this is immense, and it's weighing on what the council could ever afford. So we need to look at how we lever in extra money to do that. So how that comes through partnership working, how it comes from business. There are various other more detailed recommendations there. And importantly, is to work to ensure equal opportunity through this, and to make sure that no one's disadvantaged as part of the process. And there is a huge opportunity for good quality jobs in this, so working in trade unions is really important. So yeah, that's kind of, we could talk more, and I'm sure we will, about the detail of it. But yeah, to thank Phil, who's not here, and particularly Phil, Ben's back in Hawke's Creek, Brian Burton, who's not here either, and particularly Alex Hand, and the members of the group.
Looking forward to questions. Thank you very much. Thank you for your very sort of comprehensive, interesting introduction. So that's whetted the appetite. Yes, councillor Sands? And then we will just maybe come over to our officers to see if there's anything you want to add.
I probably should have jumped in with this question a bit sooner. It's not in attendance to embarrass anyone at all, but can I be confirmed how the potential professional interests of some of the members of the working group were taken into account as the working group proceeded with work?
Okay. Can you qualify that a bit, please, councillor Sands?
Yeah, I understand that some members of the working group have affiliations or potentially paid work with a retrofitting company. That's what I'm led to believe.
Are you saying, in fact, that that might have had a pecuniary aura, or it might have changed the way we looked in the group at bringing the report?
Well, that I don't know. But I would hope that whoever it concerns would have declared an interest to ensure that everything was hunky-dory, so to speak.
Yes, interests were declared, and in fact, all the information that we received was either from officers about work that's going on, or from outside bodies such as Flagship who are undertaking the work. There was no individual interest from members of the working group. So I think I would, I can honestly say it was totally above board and transparent in the way it operated. And I think, you know, it is a really powerful report. Thank you. Before we go, are you happy with that, councillor Sands?
As your chair and you're satisfied with that, I'll accept your judgement on that.
Thank you very much. So, before we take other questions and comments from councillors and maybe Cabinet members, can I just go over to Paul and Ben, who were with us, and see if there's anything you want to add? And, you know, obviously, you were such a part of informing us. Thank you.
No, I don't think so. I think I need to say thank you for inviting us to take part in the group, and for everybody working so closely and listening. And it's kind of like taking it past the board and possibly feeding back what we've been required. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Likewise, just to echo Phil. I spent too much time with Phil, paused, paused, thanks, and yeah, thank you for your interest in the topic. And just to reiterate, as I think the report does, this is probably one of the biggest and most important things as a council we do in terms of the environmental impact, the quality of life impact for residents. It's really important.
Thank you very much. So councillor Osborne, I saw you with your hand up a few minutes ago, and I didn't mean to ignore you.
Yeah, no, I was just going to ask if you, both of you, I'd have clambered it already, but when Lucy was giving the introduction, there was words talking through the process, through which the task and finish group went. So we had a first meeting that was scoping, just for other members' interest, information was there. So the first meeting was scoping what the report would cover, and what was to be included in it, and what wouldn't, and that identified that we focused on council housing stock, not area-wide council housing, not area-wide, including private housing. And we identified which evidence, what sort of evidence we wanted to hear from, and officers invited to execute those. Witnesses to come and speak at various meetings. We have reports from offices in various departments, including housing, the team of Paul's team, the environment strategy team, from bringing information on NRL, all their homes nowadays, and then wanting to come up with a report. I think it's best, I'm reading.
Yeah, and mine, after you.
And mine, yeah.
So what you're saying is it looks wide-ranging, the evidence was wide-ranging, and that's reflected in the report. And I think we should say thanks to Ben, who had a big hand in helping with the report, you're producing the report, along with councillor Galvin. Any other points from people about the report and the work that's been going on? Yes, councillor Stupi?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I wasn't able personally to take a full part in this particular task and finish group. But what I did see, I can confirm it was all entirely above board, and I would also like to thank officers for their input. And it was certainly a better organised task and finish group than the bins that we had a few years ago. So we learned our lessons, and obviously, this was all well put together and well managed. What I'd like to say about the report, in particular, is that we've got a set of recommendations to go to Cabinet, and Cabinet will accept those in full. But also, I'd like to see us as a scrutiny committee follow these recommendations and those that are accepted by Cabinet on a regular basis, and perhaps have a standing item, meaning scrutiny, to look at the progress that we're making, and potentially, of course, to change and adapt the recommendations as well, and add to them as new technology and content on board. Because it's an early stage in the development of technology, and there will be significant developments, I would think. So that is, I'd like to add to the recommendations that we follow that regularly, please.
Thank you for that. I think that's probably quite important, that we, or very important, that scrutiny continues to follow. Would others agree with that as a principle, that we don't just let it disappear? Yeah, thank you. Councillor Zee?
So one of the things that we need to be aware of, I think, is that we're not alone. Norwich City Council is not the only council in the country that needs to do this, this needs to happen all over the country. And one of the good things about the group, I felt, was that we managed to get evidence from other places. I can see that there's an organisation called the retrofit academy, which is referred to in paragraph 25. I must say, could somebody tell me a little bit more about what the retrofit academy is, and what input we could have into it? And I mean, are we going to have questions on retrofit in school examinations, to encourage people to become retrofit professionals?
Thank you. And councillor Osborne, are you about to answer that, or or come on with the officers?
So the retrofit academy is an online course provider essentially, that is accredited to provide certain retrofit courses. So whenever we do any retrofit projects, there are certain guidelines, legislation, etc., with the people undertaking them, planning them, assessing them, abiding by. So there are other providers of those courses, but I believe the retrofit academy has created them essentially. And so the big one is PAS 2035, that's the standard that all registrars have to abide by. And so they train people to abide by that, basically. But it's all online at the moment.
Thank you. Councillor Osborne?
Yeah, the county council's also partnered with the retrofit academy to help the providers or training providers around the county. So City College, East Coast College, West Anglia College, places like that. Because a lot of colleges don't have the knowledge themselves on how to teach retrofit, because it hasn't historically been done. So the retrofit academy is able to provide that content for them. So that's also, I think, there's a section of the report that talks about partnerships and skills development, and county councillors need authority on that with the retrofit academy.
And that's really important going forward, isn't it, that, you know, we're taking all that on board? Councillor Phil, or councillor?
Thank you, Chair. And I, obviously, we all agree with the need to retrofit. I think we'll probably have some differences in how we get there. The incoming Labour government has pledged to retrofit, I think it's 19 million homes within the UK. And what schemes are on offer that the common governments are offering? And does anybody from either the task and finish group or officers have information on that?
Thank you. Over to Ben, please, thank you.
There are various different types of funding streams, so I'll keep it to council housing specific, as we're talking about. It's all competition-based funding, so there's a pot of money, it will open on a certain date, you put forward a bid. Not everyone's successful, there's no guarantee. So the main one is the social housing decarbonisation fund. We got wave one of that, as we talk about in the report. Wave two unsuccessful, but are now putting a bid together for wave 2.2. But in terms of social housing, that's pretty much it at the moment, and it's fairly limited. So in a scale of one to two, three million, which is obviously not insignificant, but we're below the scale for we need to do what we need to do.
Does that answer your question? Do you have a...
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to follow that through at all?
Disappointing, to be honest, but that's a comment on national politics.
Yeah, rather than what we're doing here today. And who have I missed? Have I missed anyone? Councillor Sands?
Oh, someone before me, then.
Councillor Galvin, did you have your hand up a minute ago? In which case, I apologise. Over to you first, and then to councillor Sands.
So two things, really. One, it would be interesting to look at in the future the non-local authority stocks, the non-council stock, and perhaps think about a group for that, but that's not probably part of this discussion, I just wanted to note that. Two, it would be really interesting to have some, don't want to put on the spot, but the Cabinet members, be interested to have some feedback, if you'd like to give some.
Can we go to councillor Sands, councillor Osborne, councillor Thomas, and then maybe over to you? Yes, councillor Patter? Councillor Sands?
Okay, good, Chair. I think everyone here is keen on retrofitting both council stock and non-council stock to make it more energy efficient, whether that applies to impregnation or actual, the thing that provides energy within the home. But heat pumps, of course, are the sort of, you know, world of joy sort of thing. But there's always going to be this reticulated gas supply throughout our cities, which is definitely going to be torn up. And but there are moves, and there was a study in the north of England somewhere involving about 350 homes, using hydrogen gas with an additive to make the flames coloured in homes. Now, I do know from looking at, you know, back home in South Australia, there are enormous deposits, for example, of geologic hydrogen. And these are currently being mined and exploited, not just there, but around the world. So was any consideration given in the retrofit thing to other sources other than heat pumps? I.e. hydrogen-ready boilers, for example? When we had a gas engineer from British Gas come out to talk to us about a new boiler, his advice at the moment was, well, heat pumps are going to cost you a lot more than if you're current gas boiler to operate. It'd be worth waiting for a while to see what happens as far as technology goes. So we were keen, for example, on waiting for Bosch to come out with their hydrogen-ready boilers.
I'm going to councillor Osborne. Are you going to answer that one? Or if not, I'm going over to our experts. I mean, you're an expert, we're all experts.
So I think that the point specific about boilers, so the boilers that the council has, because most of them are hydrogen-ready, and we'll work on a blend. I think the country's still a long way off that, and some of the boilers haven't been concluded. I think some of the trials have stopped before they started, and some areas have given us feedback, and we want to engage with those. Certainly, I think anything that Worcester's produced for the last two or three years has been made capable to run directly on that hydrogen blend, or with a small adjustment about the point of transition. So if, I think, if there was a requirement for that to happen in the future, we can, we can do that. But I think the group may be focused on decarbonising, and I think the issue with hydrogen, certainly the UCA is how that's produced, and the development of embodied carbon within it, because of the use of fossil fuels to produce the hydrogen gas that's then injected into the gas network.
Does that answer your question, councillor Sands?
In part, because of course, there's the whole question of the deposits, geologic deposits of hydrogen around the world, which are currently in the process of, yeah, exploiting online.
Thank you. Councillor Osborne?
So the report's really focusing on what we can do in the immediate term, as well as long term, to decarbonise pumps in the retrofiting. As Paul says, hydrogen is not available at scale in UK currently for heating. And there's a range of studies, the National Intermodal Commission recently said, basically, hydrogen for home heating is not an option, it's not viable. Part of this is of the costs of production, the costs for households are believed to be 70 and three times the amount, 70% higher, or three times the amount higher for gas, the cost of production of hydrogen. There's, as Paul said, there's other uses also for hydrogen, so it's not really... Home heating isn't the highest priority for hydrogen, so you'll be needing for things like industry, some transport, some industrial nerves, and agricultural processes, but not really for home heating, that's what the National Intermodal Commission said, that's what the government is saying, as the Department for Energy Security and Health is saying. So really focused on what we can do here and now, and what's available technologies. Have a wider conversation about hydrogen and influences on that in terms of communications to residents. But you know, it's also something we talked about, is how to communicate with residents in a way that they're getting clear information about heat pumps, or gas boilers continuing, etc., but I think that's a wider discussion.
Thank you very much. So I'll go to councillor Patter, and then to councillor Hampton, and then to councillor Chelton. And we'll get there. Yeah, councillor Carrington, yeah. So councillor Patter, please.
Thank you, thanks, officers. I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. Firstly, on page 44, I think it's Q, that you've written, "ensure that any contract for delivering retrofit delivers social value", what do you mean by that, "social value"? That's my first question. The other one is, you've mentioned 21 recommendations. That seems like a lot. Which ones would you say are a priority? Thank you.
Would you like to answer that, or... Or over to councillor Galvin?
I think social value is a commonly used term to looking at contracts for that. So there are various syndicates of social value, which are building the tendering processes. So yeah, it shares some information on that. So is there, as opposed to cover what are commonly accepted? So it can range from, you know, locally commissioned services, or etc. The amount of recommendations, we've had scrutiny task and finish groups in the past that have had more recommendations than that. At housing, I remember. They probably could be clustered if it was felt that they were, but I'd be very... Let's get out like that, because they all came up from the evidence as we worked. And they were things that were felt to be very important topics, so we're trying to do it justice with the recommendations. And there probably could have been more, but they could be clustered if that was easier, but that, then might make them a bit difficult to implement. So I think it's not particularly unusual, the amount of recommendations from a piece of work that is so multifaceted.
Yes, I mean, I would tend to say such a long work, my team, that if you removed any of those, it slightly, it would weaken what the report is aiming to produce. Before I come to you, councillor Hampton, I have this awful feeling, councillor Thomas, I missed you out a long time. I'm so sorry.
Okay, a few times, I'm sorry. Yeah, but many of the points have large resource indications to the council. For example, the increasing capacity and resource of local resolutions, C and D. Given the budget pressures on this council, and all councils, and the inflation of the 30-year puts and the local authority budgets by central government, should the need for an uplifting funding address, so we can truly deliver costs as far as we possibly can, possibly through an additional, dare I say, even more recommendation? Another recommendation?
Another recommendation? Any comments on that point made by councillor Thomas, or shall we come back to that in a minute? Not yet, we'll come back, maybe. Councillor Osborne?
I guess, so it's from the discussions, correct, if I'm wrong, and Paul, but from the discussions, some of the...
I guess, so it's from the discussions, correct, if I'm wrong, from the discussions, some of the recommendations are things that can be done with existing capacity or with restructured HRAT. Some of them may require additional resources, but I think probably that needs to be looked at as to, you know, as to whether these recommendations would need additional resources. I don't know if we can specifically say that they would need additional resources. Probably we'll do that.
Council Thomas?
Yeah, the resources are capital, well, relatively capital intensive. Of course, there's a difference between a financing lease and an operating lease. Operating leases are from revenue, and obviously a lot of the planted equipment, virtually all the things we're talking about are planted equipment. Topical development, as yesterday's important statement. So it is possible, linked to the HRF, call it creative accounting, if you can line it, as a way of achieving what we're about, doing the retrofit.
If you're talking, when you're talking about additional resource, you're talking about additional resource, but then it helps us to deliver, to deliver the project or the actual money at least instead of capital, instead of retrofitting.
Well, it's, it's all, I mean, I'm not limited to council resources. I'm a firm believer in other people's money, not to be personally making, but for this council, for us to achieve what we need to achieve, we need other people's money. It's about leveraging, leveraging in those resources. It is that, there's no shortage of cash in this country. It's a question of how we go about it, and we've got to go about it in an innovative way, operating differently, not the way we normally be operating.
Yeah, one more point, and then I'll go to Council Hampton, who might have the sort of definitive answer here.
I think one of the key things that came up in the discussions, the evidence provided by officers, is that the existing HRAT commitments, which are to implement in the next thirty years, will be a start, it won't be enough to get us to where they need to be. So there will need to be additional funding somewhere. I mean, paragraph sixty-five, aim, the same progress is required to be, exactly, as we're saying, with the short, will be.
Yes, thank you.
If you could just go back and say, the report is brilliant. No criticism, just how we can build on it and develop.
Yeah, and we're here to make points on the report, so yes, silence is not a good thing. Thank you. Can I go to Council Hampton, and then who's Councilor Champion, and then Councilor Carrington, not forgotten? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll come in as Council Galvion asked about our cabinet feedback, which I was obviously happy to do at this point. I was going to kind of wait to the end, so you all had a chance to expand. If you were in the task and finish group, ask those questions and see where the field of the meeting was at. And it obviously goes without saying, with full response to recommendations, a little bit further down the line, a cabinet meeting, we've had a bit of an opportunity, obviously, we've been through the report, which is really positive bit of work, clear that members and officers have put a lot of time and effort into it. And I really welcome that this has been on the agenda. But it's also timely, the report outlines a lot of the work that has been ongoing for, to build that evidence base or deliver measures where we can, as well as in the context of, as for those recommendation notes we called the plan, the ongoing work on the environmental programme. So there's a lot for us to go away and consider. That's obviously got to be me, the environmental strategy portfolio holder, Beth, Social Housing and other colleagues as well. There's bits of this, obviously, stretched into, there's bits about procurement and all of the planning and Mike. So lots, lots of us, lots for us to go away with, officers are kind of considered very fully. But yeah, otherwise, as I say, I'm interested primarily today just to hear the key points that might be a bit more implicit in the report, that people want to drag out and highlight, if people do have any questions now on that more political side compared to what the officers can provide. We're here, but yeah, thank you for all the work that's gone into this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll go to Council Champion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I was just curious about the heat networks and heat networking zones. It says on, it's on page thirty-five, and it refers to the government is committed to introducing these. But we don't know what they're going to look like, essentially. And I was just wondering, in context of that, we're talking about council housing. With my understanding, most council housing in my work, for instance, is you've got a council house and then privately owned house. How would we implement something of along the lines of a heat network in Norwich for our social housing?
And this certainly came up when we were, when we were talking. So would you like to answer that one?
At the moment, there's an awful lot of uncertainty about what it actually means. So the government have kind of committed to introducing heat network zoning, haven't really given much details of who's responsible, who's going to fund it, the obligations if you're within a heat network zone. So all we essentially know at the moment is that Norwich was selected as part of the study. An external consultant has sort of mapped the city, worked out areas that are particularly suitable for them in terms of high demand and space for generation. So there are sort of proposed zones, but apart from that, we don't really know how it's going to work. They're set to do a consultation on it, I think, early next year, which will probably set out further details. But apart from sort of draft ideas, maybe, there's a lot we don't know. So they'll designate heat network zones, someone can put one in there, it doesn't have to be us, it could be a private company. And then you can either connect to it or not, there's not an obligation for private owners to do so. But I think as the report sets out, certain buildings are then obligated to connect to it if there are some there. But how it works, the government sort of make it in there.
Thank you. Thank you. Over to Council Carrington, followed by Council Osborne. Thank you.
Thank you. Page thirty-five, going down to paragraph thirty-seven, where it talks about the accountability of central government to population fund, Wave Two bid was unsuccessful. I mean, I wonder if there's any more information about why it was unsuccessful, other than it does state that it did later this year. And also, and the council's ability to fund measures directly has been hindered by the large-scale central government cuts to the budget. I do appreciate the government, the council rather, has been reliant on applying to government funds and grants to label direct measures. I'd like to know a bit more about what the limitations are regarding applying to these types of schemes.
Thank you. Can I come back to you on that, please?
I don't think we actually received feedback on why our Wave Two bid was unsuccessful. If, I think generally when they do provide feedback, it's just very generic, sort of regurgitating their requirements, basically, assuming you understand why you haven't met them. As we say, it's super competitive, there's a set pot that councils all around the country have to bid for. And I think it's inevitable that people miss out, and unfortunately we did. But because of that, we're hoping that our chances for two point two will be increased. That's, yeah, eighty million at the pot, again, spread across whoever applies for it. I don't know how much at the moment we're bidding for, because it's still under development. And hopefully that will be successful. Was your second part about the limitations and the schemes? So I think the key one is that you apply to it with no guarantee of actually getting the funding. So for example, Wave Two, an awful lot of time went into preparing the bids, and then you're unsuccessful, and it's essentially a waste of time. That's, that's the main thing, which is Australian, then the government funded schemes do have an awful lot of requirements further to what if we were to spend our own money, we'd have. So they're all there for a reason, but it makes the admin of it very labourous. It often makes them a lot more expensive than if we were to have the funds just to do it ourselves, because you have to do things a certain way, report things a certain way. So there are quite a lot of extra, you know, I suppose, limitations that you have to go through once you have that funding.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. Council Osborne, I think you wanted to make a point.
Yeah, just to be careful, Karen, about the, I know a part of the question about private sector leaseholders in amongst council housing. That was one of the things that reached the evidence from Leeds, I think was how they tackled that problem of got leaseholders on board. And in paragraph, sort of, the section on Leeds, especially paragraph sixty, they've got a very proactive approach to engagement and finding a start point specifically on retrofit, five point five, for that agreement, and anticipating more. So I guess this is coming to the board's point, and also to Anna's point about that, about the expansion in Ben's team and through the construction team, and more, wherever that additional capacity might be needed to increase engagement. And then one of, one of the key points of the report was also, sort of, the expanded report is that communication and engagement, is how to get people on board with the retrofitting and potentially putting some of their money to it in their private sector, under occupy.
Thank you. Anybody else got any points, other points? Yes, Council Stuteley, followed by Council Sands. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And just before I speak about private homes, I should declare that I'm a executive director of the company, but for the benefit of Cabinet members that are here, I wanted to just highlight the, what I feel is an opportunity for the company going forward with the growing industry. We've talked about the, the possibility for training of options and line homes, allied homes. We like to think that we have a, we have a social value at the core, and using line homes to develop a retrofit business plan would be, would enable us to deliver some of that social value through training opportunities for local people. But also, I'm keen that we don't miss out on that opportunity to exploit an industry that's going to grow exponentially over, over the coming years. So I just wanted to highlight that for Cabinet's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Sands?
Thank you, Chair. In recent years, I'm taking back over the last probably seven, eight years, maybe a little bit longer, the council's already had a programme of upgrading doors, windows, external insulation, also internal insulation. And with the proposed development of retrofitting for homes, and of course, this is going to involve heat pumps and things. And so my guess is, homes will be doing without perhaps their current gas supply, if they have a gas stove. So has any thought been given as to the retrofitting of new stoves to council properties?
Right, that's an interesting question. Yes.
We didn't talk about it as part of the group, but yeah, actually, it's something that we need to get picked up. Certainly, the new properties that our owners are bringing on street for us, don't have gas in those. Sorry, yeah, as I say, certainly the new properties that our owners are building for us, handing over, don't have gas. And so there is provision in those for stoves to go in, and I think we've talked about induction pumps and things elsewhere. So I think that would have to happen then with, with the retrofit programme, although it didn't, it wasn't something we discussed specifically during the group.
Okay. And it's possibly part of engagement with residents, you know, as, as we go forward. I haven't got anybody else down, Council Osborne, and I was going, Council Jones, I was going to say, I'll come to Council Jones, apologies. Yes.
Just on that point, like, I think one of the things we did talk about is the fact that by twenty fifty or even sooner than that, essentially, homes won't be on the gas network anymore, there's this very high target likelihood of that. So, so gas appliances won't really be a thing, and you're in fact, you're right, we need to, we should have talked about that a bit more in that thing. But, but that's just to bear in mind also when we're looking at the retrofit programme is essentially any gas boilers that get fitted between now and twenty thirty-five will eventually be taken out again. And the government at the moment is saying that eighty percent of homes will have, sorry, eighty percent of new of homes will have to replace their gas boilers by twenty thirty-five. So the remaining twenty percent, well, are very high standard charges, because the cost for centralizing them, twenty percent, wrong, it was eighty-five percent of homes. So there is, I mean, whatever we do, it's going to need to move away from gas in those homes, because otherwise, I would go without gas for with that type of charges.
Thank you. Oh, yes, yes.
I mean, I agree with what you say, Council Osborne, except I do know that there are, despite what has been said earlier, there are moves to retain the reticulated gas supply and mixways up with hydrogen. And I do know that there is highly likely to be retention of gas in the form of hydrogen, which of course is carbon free. Remember, I was talking about geological hydrogen, not hydrogen separated from electrolysis.
And one of the things we know is that this, whatever we're thinking today, it's going to change all the way along. And we should be kept in touch in, in this group as to how things are changing. And there are huge changes ahead, and some of them we can't actually forecast, but. Council Jones?
Thank you. Really welcome this report from Scream Me, and as Council Hampton's already said, it's going to get us a lot of food for thought. And it's something that, yeah, it's a topic we're already, obviously, spending a lot of time talking about, because it's not just the client benefits, it's about the social benefit, and we've got to look at those side by side. Obviously, as the portfolio holder, it's about the money, the points, and that is going to be how we look at that, but it is important. And we do have to benefit, we do have to balance our new build programme alongside this. So there's an awful lot of discussion to be had, and a lot of understanding where we go forward. I think it is, we need to take some time to look at this properly, in terms of these recommendations, how they fit in with what we're already doing, and where we go from here. And just, yeah, it's something, I think, it was really interesting hearing some of the comments today around funding and the piecemeal nature of it being so disappointing, because actually it makes it more expensive to do. Because actually, if we can't look at things in large scale, then it makes it more, more challenging for us to afford when actually government should be making it easier for us to afford. And I just hope we can move towards a situation where we're looking at it ten year blind, actually, in terms of, yes, it's great, we're talking about our stock, but we need to be talking about, you know, the government needs to be talking about everything, because actually the impact socially, financially, and for the client is so significant. So yeah, just welcome this, and I look forward to, I think you and I having far more conversations on this. We already have had a number, but this is going to be something that is taking up time going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. So I think probably everybody who wanted to say something on this has spoken. And can I just ask, is everybody happy to accept this report? And if so, that's wonderful. And just thank you again, particularly to officers who've supported along the way very much for people like me who needed that support, and to Councilor Patter for chairing, and thank you. And we'll move then to the next item. And, and all the recommendations are accepted, aren't they? The board have recommendations, and that's fantastic. And thanks, thanks to everyone for your input on that. So we'll move to item five on the agenda. We're doing quite well, I think. item five on the agenda. We're doing quite well, I think. Yeah. So it is a review of the effectiveness of scrutiny committee. And you've got that at page forty nine. Thank you again, everybody. Thank you. So page forty nine, and we met a month ago, so I've lost track now, when we met in an informed setting to look at these recommendations, to look at how effective scrutiny was being. And I wonder what comments people would like to make on this, if any. Counselor Sands?
Just looking in the report on the question of standing substitutes, standing substitutes certainly are a good idea in certain committees, for example, plating, where people have to have been trained beforehand. But sometimes, depending on the time of the year, what people have, are doing in their own professional lives. So sort of, you say, or you can only have certain standing substitutes, is going to be a bit difficult on certain committees. I mean, scrutiny is one, for example. I frequently sub on scrutiny for people who can't attend. So I don't think that should be something which is so set in stone, unless it's for a committee or committees that demand prior training in order to participate, such as licensing and planning.
Oddly. Yes, I mean, obviously, there is training to be on scrutiny, because there is a lot to learn, a lot to take on board. We did that training earlier in the year. And I think what was being said on that occasion, you know, when we met to look at scrutiny and its effectiveness, was, you know, the ideal would be that if you couldn't attain, you, there was somebody nominated who would take your place. I mean, and I think that came out particularly because on the occasion when we met to look at the effectiveness, we were a fairly small band. And, you know, you want to be reflective of the scrutiny committee. So other people will perhaps have a comment to make on that one. I think it isn't the ideal. Maybe, you know, couldn't happen every time, but it would be good for people to have the training, you know, to come, so they could come to scrutiny. Any comments on that? Any?
We already have a system of name subs for H O S C and for N C C S P, D S P, C S E S P.
Yes. Any other comments on that one? Any other comments on, you know, what was the discussion on that occasion when we looked at the review, when we did the review? Or are we all happy that that is what's being said? Counselor Galvin?
Yes, thank you. I was actually unwell for this, so I missed it. But I wanted to ask if it was discussed, joint training with cabinet members at all, or was that something? It does say, I think it's mentioned in there, but did you think about that at all? Because I remember when we were trained by the Centre for Public Scrutiny, they did, when we had a session with them, they mentioned that as a good way to build understanding between scrutiny and cabinet. And this report clearly picks up that that's an area that we could put some effort into.
Yes. I mean, certainly on item number eleven, paragraph eleven, it doesn't explicitly say training, does it? But it does talk about effective relationships. And maybe that would be something that could go in, and that paragraph, would that be helpful? Because certainly we did discuss it, and that's a really important point. People would be happy if that goes in. Thank you. Any other points on this? So people happy to accept that? Lots of dots? Dots, thank you. Okay, lovely. Thank you. I've lost my agenda, but I'll come back to it. So we'll move on to item six, which is the scrutiny committee work programme. That's page fifty seven. And I believe that there are a couple of points that people want to make. Because what we do know is that one of the items, which is the N C S L item, which was coming to the, oh no, the equality, diversity, inclusion policy and strategy can't come to the December meeting. That's the first thing to say. Get my ducks in the right order, as it were. So it leaves a bit of a hole there. And it has been suggested, and I wonder if, you know, that we should actually put something else in there to make it a full meeting. Counselor Galvin, would you like to make, I think you have a point to make on that?
Well, other members may have other ideas, but yeah, we are looking at having a new corporate plan, and we're going to see a draft. But to hear a bit about the process and the structure of that plan might be one possibility for the other section of that meeting, a sort of briefing with perhaps some questions added to that. We could just inquire whether it's possible to hear about the communications and engagement strategy.
Yes. Counselor Osborne, do you want to clarify?
Yeah, I was speaking up and ordered the other point, where anticipation strategy, communication strategy, which is linked to the corporate plan refresh. So it would make sense to bring those together, especially this sort of post peer review, sort of recommend those. The review of that participation strategy was a pre, post, peer review, and with tie to the corporate strategy refresh. So we'd like to get a look at that as well, if officers can do that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So could we ask, do you think, if officers, I mean, it would be probably five or so minutes on each. So it wouldn't be, it shouldn't be endless, but it would just be helpful to us going into the January meeting to have had that update, which is that your question? Everyone else agree with that?
Counselor Pad, yeah, I just wanted to say that only if they have the time. Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize the if. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Because I think we have to be mindful of officer time, because you don't have so much time. There's not, you know, there are often staff shortages and things on there. And we must be mindful of that, not put too much on this. So thank you. Thank you for making that point. It's very important. Also, anything else on the work programme that we, Counselor Galvin?
Yes, I know that N C S L's there without a date. Do we have, could we have an update on when they might be ready?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's going to be a year after, isn't it?
It's going to be next year. It's, we have to wait until the company's going to prove the counts themselves, and they're not expecting to look at them until the end of this year, beginning of the next.
But that's something that we can keep track of.
We've certainly been in contact with the management director and said that the committee would like to see the business plan.
So that's noted, and, you know, that's important. Any other points on the work programme? No, that's good. So we'll move then, we'll move on to item seven, which is a report for the Health and Overview Scrutiny Committee. And I think that's Counselor Prin's, do you?
Yeah, hello. I have to apologize. I don't have a report. I made a complete mess up, because it turned out that I was at two meetings at the same time. I failed to stop this, and I should have seen Counselor Galvin, who's my son, to a meeting. So I eat humble pie, and I have no report to issue today.
Absolutely fine. Thank you. Should we be having a report? That's fine. And the other?
There wasn't a meeting.
There wasn't a meeting.
There was no meeting. Okay. So according to my agenda, we have finished a whole of items on the agenda.